Good afternoon, everyone. This is our committee meeting as a whole. Looking at the Resolution 60-372. This resolution was first drawn up by Councilman Carroll with the help of our attorney, Mr. Lender, and I met myself personally had drawn in with this resolution. I want Mr. Carroll to open up, and I'm gonna come out and chime behind him. Then I want to open up the floor to the Vice President, and then we can go from Districts 1, 4, 5, and 6.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm hoping that in this committee meeting, that with Resolution 6372, just to set some groundwork of thought path, I'm hoping that we can, one, set the parameters of what we choose to investigate based on what was presented on here. There is one thing right now that I'm willing to bypass, being that Shot Spotter is now on the way out. It may not be needed. But as far as this, I'm hoping that as we go through this over the next maybe hour or less, that we can define a scope, agree on what may be an attorney, and move forward. If we can't define a scope, then I'm afraid that we may be at an impasse. And if we are at an impasse, then I would hate to see how we go through the next week or so. We continue to hear the community. We continue to hear them ask for an investigation. And it's extremely clear that the community wants an investigation, to know what the truth is, and we owe them that. So as we go through this, I'm gonna sit back on the first round and kind of hear what everybody has to say, probably make comments airily like I always do, behest of Joel saying, "Mr. Carroll." But I think the most important thing here now is let's iron this resolution down to where we can all agree on it and what we actually gonna move forward with. Scope, attorney, counsel, how we define it. I'm open. Let's move forward.
And again, I'd like to thank Mr. Carroll. I think it's three weeks ago when Chief Prime had threw out some allegations. At that time, Councilman Carroll and our attorney got together and draw up this resolution. Took him two weeks to put it before us. But, you know, last week I did challenge the chief to really turn over all the information over to a higher authority. I have not heard no type of word yet that he has done that. The question is, you know, why go forth? You know, me personally, CJ, you know, from what I have seen and even came from the administration over the last couple of days and weeks, you know, I'm okay. And I say good, but okay. But I have many people that I represent is not good, they're not okay. Many people that I represent is for the investigation. I ain't gonna say many people, a lot of people. Go to church, go to grocery store. I mean, people are just constantly just saying, "Investigate, investigate." Again, it's, you know, it's not that CJ pretty much want, it's what the citizens want, you know? And it's our job, especially when somebody as a high authority, as the chief of police, bringing out such allegations, you know? And I can understand that you have employees that's upset, and they might throw out different things or say different things, but when you have somebody as high as the chief of police that bring great concerns, not only to me, but many people that I represent, not just people that I represent, you know, people throughout the city. It's sad that we are going through this situation. I actually got a phone call yesterday and speaking to someone from Birmingham and saying that this made the news all the way in Birmingham. You know, I like good news such as the Civic Center, you know, the community center that's coming on DIP, you know, redoing Taylor Park Pool. I mean, I like good news like that, but news like this that's in front of us, to even just to sit up here and have to make a vote, you know, even though those are two different things, right? What we talking about, you know, I don't like it, you know? This is a part of the job I don't like, but it's something that we have to do, you know? Pretty much, you know, what I'm thinking I'm asking for this council to do is, you know, let's do what the people want to do. I mean, want us to do, and that is to investigate, you know? And even what decision is made later on today, or whenever that decision is made on, you know, if it is to get rid of the chief, I want his supporters to know that we are going to look into the situation as far as all the allegations that, you know, the chief had throughout, put out there. You know, again, this is not just for CJ. It's no political thing for me, period. None whatsoever. But again, it's about the trust and regaining trust, you know, with the people in the community, and that they know that we are doing the right thing. So again, you know, just let us prove to the people, let the people know today, especially before we vote on anything else, that we are going to look into it, you know? And it's one reason, again, why I called this committee behold, where we can all can just sit down here and then even discuss who it's gonna be. You know, it's gonna be somebody, you know, within town, somebody out of town, you know, I'm have the floor just open for the discussion. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've read through the amendment that we have in front of us a couple of times, and I think as it's written, it does give the council the authority to request and move forward on an investigation. It doesn't specify things like the attorney or the exact scope, which may take some time because maybe Mr. Carroll has an attorney in mind, but I don't know that the rest of us do, and that might take some discussion. But if we can pass something that is broad, that says, "Yes, we will begin an investigation," I can support that. The President has talked about challenging Chief Prime to go to the proper agency to take his allegations of criminal or ethical wrongdoing, and that hasn't happened. So with this investigation that the council may or may not approve today, we can ask that those things be looked at for any criminal or unethical wrongdoing. I don't believe there has been any, but that's just my opinion, and if enough people in the city believe that's the case, then we certainly ought to have someone else take a look at that. If they are strictly grievances about the chain of command, or the organizational chart, or just personality issues, whatever that is, that, in my opinion, is administrative and should not be part of an investigation that we approve to go forward. But again, I think those details need to be worked out separately, and if we can move forward today with saying, "Yes, we are going to institute an investigation," I think that takes care of the problem, and we'll come back and hash out exactly what the scope is at a later time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I have shared my concerns in our council meeting. I think I did enough talking during that time, but of course, I support moving forward. It is some things that I'm reading over, seeing the difference. I would like the time to be moved up, that we're not waiting and holding this thing over, but at the same time, we need to make sure that we're staying focused on what the community, what the city, what the residents would like to see. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, so in pre-council, I raised these ambiguities about the resolution as presented, and, you know, it was raised by you, Mr. President, that we ought to find a way to move forward, you know, with some reassurance with the public that we are, we're going to investigate or inquire as to, you know, all these allegations and, you know, maybe even Shot Spotter or all these other things. But to do, to set a scope and that we are gonna hire somebody, an attorney or some other third party, some non-attorney, to do that just on a moment's notice, I think is an error. And, you know, my goal would be to try to narrow down the focus of the investigation. What are the specific issues that is most important to the public and ones that we sort of have the duty to investigate? So I've prepared an amendment, or I've got Mr. Lender to prepare an amendment that's really broad in general and allows us, or affords us the opportunity to revisit this investigation while still making it absolutely clear that we will do an investigation, but we need to narrow down the focus and how we're gonna go about it so that we're not just jumping into it haphazardly, and we get no effect. The public realizes no gain or no benefit from it. So this amendment that I have here basically says that "The President of the Council shall appoint an investigative committee composed of the Council Committee of the Whole to direct an investigation into the allegations that Chief Prime has raised with his public statements, the circumstances of his being placed on administrative leave, and any other related matters the investigative committee deems appropriate. That the investigative committee shall meet and confer and set parameters for the investigation. And lastly, that the investigative committee shall file a full report setting forth its findings and recommendations within 30 days of meeting and conferring as laid out herein." So I think it satisfies the concerns raised by you, Mr. President. I think it also satisfies the concerns raised by Mr. Penn in that he's ready to get this thing going sooner rather than later, so it decreases the timeframe from 90 days down to 30 days. That's the amendment that I have prepared, and I'm prepared to offer it.
Mr. President. Appreciate it. Obviously, I mean, the... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, 4, 5, yeah. No, that's through 5, 6, and then Mr. Carroll. I'm sorry, Mr. Day. I'm sorry, Mr. Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna rehash what I said this morning. Y'all have heard me say that multiple times before. It doesn't need to be said again. I think any investigation is an exercise in futility. I think we will spend a lot of time and a lot of money, and at the end of it, we will be exactly where we are, sitting here at this table today. So, and here's the other thing. I am not gonna be bullied into voting for something I don't support in order to vote for something that I do support. I'm not gonna be bullied into doing that. These are two separate issues. Barring Chief Prime is separate from the investigation, and any effort to link it is a bullying tactic that I am not gonna support. I tell you right now, I'm not gonna support an investigation for the reasons I've already stated. If the council wants to refer some of these items to a council committee to look into, I'm fully supportive of that. But to launch an investigation and spend a lot of time and money on an investigation, I don't think is a good idea.
I too, I'm not gonna go into a diatribe from this morning, but the fact of the matter, I can stand by this amendment. I think that, I mean, as a deliberative body, I think we need to, we need to take the time to prepare ourselves about what we actually want the scope to look like. I don't think we, I don't think there's any way that I can walk out of here with whatever scope that we have. I can walk out of here and feel confident in what we, what could be decided. I'd like to deliberate about who, or think about who we, if hiring a council. I would like to really be thoughtful and purposeful and think about what route we go on that. So at this point, and, you know, I like the 30 days. We're at a point in the city of Mobile where we have to move forward. The longer this stretches out, the more impact that it has on our officers, the more impact that it has just amongst the community. We have to move forward, and if this is the route, and investigations are out, then I stand behind it. But I also do, will remind that it has been turned over to the highest, the highest prosecutorial authority in the state of Alabama, that being the Attorney General. And I hope that everyone would join me in writing a letter on behalf of myself or yourself as well, asking the Attorney General to make this a top priority, and if possible, move this up the list so that we get that done. But so on top of being able to support this amendment the way it is, just so I can spend a couple of days thinking about what route I feel is best. But in the meantime, I'm actually gonna write a letter and send it to the Attorney General asking that it be sped up and looked at as soon as possible, because the city of Mobile has to move forward.
Mr. Carroll.
I can count. I think you can too. I think that both of these are gonna fail today. I mean, we're wasting our time here. We might as well adjourn. I can count. Y'all can too. So y'all have drawn your lines. There's no consensus, and there's no consensus building. So if we can't do that, let's stop wasting everybody's time. Let's go downtown. Let's go downstairs, and let's vote this over with. Because that's where we are. I can count. I've been here a long time, and I can count by listening. We are at an impasse. So both of them die, or we figure it out. And right now, you guys have dug your heels in. I said I was willing to listen, but this amendment, it does exactly the same thing you complained about this morning, so.
How so, Mr. Carroll?
I'm not gonna argue with it. I mean, I can count. I'm just being honest. I can really count. So I'm not gonna sit here and banner. I'm not gonna bargain. I'm not gonna go back and forth. The public is asking for something, and we're trying not to give it to them.
Well, I disagree with that, Mr. President.
Based on what I hear you saying, and based on what I've read, which I read downstairs again, too, I just don't see that. In all honesty, I don't see it. I see it as a measure of trying. 30 days is nowhere close to enough time to get anything done. I couldn't get that kind of stuff done in my own office in 30 days. You know, 90 days was asking for a lot. So since we're at an impasse, let's just call this adjourned. Let's go downstairs.
Good thing you're not in charge of the meeting.
One second. We're gonna calm this down. Mr. Carroll, Mr. Wood, hold on for one second. I got you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Carroll, tell me, tell us what would you like to see in this amendment?
Well, I think that, for one, I've already offered one cut. We take Shot Spotter out, because we know that it's going away. All right? Let's find out what we really need to do based on this, the original amendment. It called into question that everything that was mentioned, that somebody had a question or it was announced that needed to be investigated into. I took the time, Lender and I, to go through every accusation there listed. All we gotta do is decide on which ones are the most important, scratch the ones we don't need, get in agreement. I made a recommendation of attorney. You made a recommendation of attorney. There was others that made recommendation. Pick the one we think is best suited. Send out a request for a letter retainer, and let's move on. Is that simple?
So again, Mr. Carroll, I got you, Mr. Wood. I promise you, I do.
I'm patiently, impatient.
Trying to get this smooth as possible. Mr. Carroll, slow it down and tell us again what you desire.
The original Resolution 6372, I'm willing to strike. I'm willing to strike investigation into Shot Spotter. We know that it's over. We know it's no longer gonna be part of the administration. I'm willing to strike that. We know that it was unsuccessful. They're cleaning it up. We're not spending any more money on it. All right? What's next?
Number one, proper administration of the Mobile Police Department. I don't mean that.
Right. That was an accusation that was made by him. It had, what, no parameters? We just, why did you put it in there? Because it was something he mentioned?
That's right.
So what's improper? That's the question.
Somebody's just throwing out, if somebody's just throwing out allegations, to be throwing out allegations, we have no specifics to go on. So let's be specific in what it is.
So what is the improper allegation?
Well, I don't know. You don't know? Nobody knows. So I cross that one out, because we don't know what they're talking about. We can say improper operations of anything you want to put in there.
Put a question mark on it. What's the next?
No, I would say cross that one out. Just cross it out.
What's next?
Lack of control over the Mobile Police Department Intelligence Division, also referred to the MPD Cyber and Gulf Coast Technology Center. Same question.
No, that goes to...
How do you prove or disprove?
That goes to whether or not the chief should have control.
Hey, hey, audience.
I think that was alluding to whether or not there should be some type of control or some type of interaction between our chief and the intelligence agent, and how that actually goes down and how that happens. I think we need to look at that.
I think that's an easy one that can be put on there, because it mainly deals with the organizational chart and who is over that particular department within public safety.
But we don't have any control over the organizational chart.
I know it's administrative, Joel. I'm aware of that.
So why are we looking into something we have no ability to affect?
It's an investigation. The council by rule can investigate administrative action. It's not that we're telling the administration what to do. We're investigating it. We're not directing, telling, we're investigating. We have that power. Bring it to us. What's next? I'm sorry.
In regards...
Jenna, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, it is administrative. It is an organizational chart, because public safety is a department. The Mobile Police Department, the Fire Department, and others are within public safety, and so it's an organizational chart issue. If a department head doesn't like the fact that they are within that department and don't want to have to report up the chain of command, that is administrative. I mean, why do we need to investigate how the administration sets up their departments and the organization?
It also goes to the speculation that some are saying that there's multi-layers of leadership from top down, and certain layers of leadership interfering with portions without going through the proper channel, I mean. It also leads to that.
Again, it's all administrative, and it's hearsay.
So, Mr. President, to Mr. Carroll, this is what we would be investigating. We'd be investigating the assumed lack of control over the Mobile Police Department. I too share many of the public's issues or concerns with the organizational structure of the Intelligence Division referred to. So, you know, if this one were to stay, then it would be, you know, to provide an operational understanding to the people's representatives of how it works, so then we could affect policy in the future, and I think that would be beneficial to an investigation.
I think by that wording, you're actually telling them what to give us. I think our mission is to investigate at this point while we're here, and then have resolution made for that. So the wording needs to be better.
What'd you suggest, Mr. Carroll?
I'm thinking about it, Mr. President, but our sentence structure needs to be a little bit better there. Linda, do you have any recommendations for sentence structure? Yeah, how, you know, I don't know, to be honest. I have no idea.
Organization structure of the MPD Cyber Gulf Coast Technology Center in connection with, I assume in connection with any allegations made by Chief Prime?
That work for you?
That's precisely what my amendment says, but broadly and generally.
That's just one item. That's one item.
Hold up, hold up. Mr. Carroll, just, go ahead, Mr. Reynolds.
So that's my point, you know, we're just having Lender type up some changes on the fly, and, you know, I don't even know if we got support for either one of them on the council, but my suggestion is, in order to get it to a point where we can work, you know, through these differences, everybody has the ability to chew on it, and they can go out and get feedback from their constituents, more so than just reading some Facebook posts to figure out what is important to you, the people that I represent. Tell me what is important to you. Now, we've heard a lot of testimony down there on the floor, and there's other sides of this that needs to be heard as well. So my suggestion with the amendment is, first and foremost, let the public know, "We're gonna investigate. We're gonna try to figure out what's going on here." Now, what we need to investigate and how we go about investigating it, I'd like the opportunity to go to my constituents and say, "What's important to you?" And weigh through that and measure it, rather than just having, you know, the tit-for-tat back and forth in the public, and we're just supposed to assume that's how our constituents feel.
Hold on, Mr. Days.
So that's why I think this amendment is absolutely in line, is that we put everything to rest that we are gonna investigate now. Now that we all mutually agree that we're gonna do that, let's bring it to the table what we're gonna do.
You, one line item doesn't set your scope.
It does not. You're right.
It doesn't set your scope, and...
That's precisely the point.
What will happen?
Mr. Carroll, just, let's just go, what would satisfy you today? Let's just stick to that.
I'm working through it, you know? For each line item, working through it. He, I think the gentleman for more is trying to push that one line item onto us. You read through the rest, we define our scope. It's where I'd like to be, and let's move on. We can even make a recommendation for an attorney today. I don't have a problem using your guy from D6.
What other amendment did you, Mr. Carroll?
What other amendments that you...
What's next?
Hey, we're gonna be calm with this.
So I touched the wrong way again, huh?
Mr. Carroll.
Please.
Yeah, that's... All right. So what number were you on? I'll read them. I don't have a problem with that. All right, 3 says alleged failures to Shot Spotter. We took that out, all right? That's out. So 3's out. Failure of the city to address or resolve written grievances filed by the Chief Prime. So have they been? Did they do? Nobody say anything to us? Leave it.
I thought we had the report from what the city did do on Chief Prime's grievances.
Look, they gave it to me this morning at 9:00. I mean, how, I don't know what's in it yet, you know, and I don't know what's public. I didn't talk to those people, and it wasn't done by a third...
Never mind, forget it.
Yeah, and it wasn't done by a third party.
Well, it depends on what... That's what they talked about earlier. Never mind. Let's go ahead.
Say it again. Collusion between city officials and a third party and/or third parties in an attempt to silence or else remove the chief. Collusion between who? I mean, I don't know that. Is it true? Does it require to be investigated? Who's the collusion between? You know, the question is, is that, is he making a situation that there's collusion between upper level administration and others to get him out of there? We don't know that unless we look into it.
Mr. President.
He's pretty...
Hold up, hold up. Mr. Penn, and then Mr. Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we're making this situation harder than what it is. We have some amendments here. Can we just deal with the amendments? If you already got the same thing stated in the same in the original resolution, we don't even have to go over that. So what, the amendments that you have, I wish we just stay focused on those things and discuss those things. That would change. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hold up. We're gonna do, Mr. Penn, I told Mr. Day who was next.
Collusion between city officials and third parties in attempt to silence or else remove Chief Prime. I've been involved in a lot of terminations in my business career, and they have always involved conversations by senior officers about the employee. And that, and a conclusion was made between superior, between the superiors of the employee that it was time for that employee to be terminated. Now, if you want to call that a conspiracy, you can call it conspiracy, but that's how terminations happen.
Before we go, Mr. President... Hold on, Mr. Carroll. Let's just go ahead with Mr. Penn's suggestion, because we ain't gonna be here...
I hear, but I need to make this statement. These line items that we're looking at are, were taken, these are not line items that I made up. These line items were taken specifically from every... from every word that the chief made accusations of. These are not my words. These are his. So remember that. So if you think that these are my words and I'm saying this, they are not. So they were very carefully listened to, very carefully read, very carefully printed. And I think Lynda did a good job in defining those based on what the chief has made accusations of in public.
Question. So what you're saying is everything the chief said in every media interview, everything he alleged or every grievance, we're going to go one by one, each one of those, and put them into an investigation.
Well.
Just because he listed those as grievances does not necessarily mean they are credible nor that we should put them into an investigation.
Ms. Gregory, I think that's what we're doing now by establishing.
Well, but you're arguing to put them in and we don't know that they're credible, just like Mr. Dave just said. When you fire somebody, you don't just do it with one person. Now, if you call what they did collusion because the mayor and maybe the chief of staff decided it was time for Chief Prime to go, I mean, you're not saying it, but the chief has said it and you want to investigate it because the chief said it.
Oh, Ms. Gregory, I didn't say anything. What I'm saying is that if the general public is asking us to investigate what he has made accusations of, then that is what I am saying that we should do. You keep saying that I'm saying.
Ms. Carroll.
I'm sorry. You're saying that I'm saying that, but I'm not saying that.
Hold up. I'm going to ask the audience one more time. Please, as you're talking, now I'm going to ask someone to ask you to leave out of here. Please, if you need to talk, please leave out of this meeting.
Hold on. You're saying that I'm saying this and I'm not. This is taken from his statements. I think Mr. Reynolds has the same idea that this is me saying this and me arguing for this. This is me saying and arguing for what I have been asked for and not me saying that I'm going to do this. This is what I've been asked for. So stop saying that I'm saying this because these were not my words. I did not articulate them. They were articulated by someone else and that someone else even challenged this council. Now, let's not forget, if we do sweep this under the rug and we find out the stuff is true, then we're just as complacent as everybody else.
Ben.
The amendment is simply that it lays out the powers we have from the Zogby Act, state law, to investigate, obtain legal counsel if we so, if we choose to. And then it lays out a timeframe. It says, in the council's number six in the amendment, in the council's information that during or just before the work week of April 8 through 11th, 2024, City of Mobile Police Department Chief Paul Prime emptied his office, personal belongings, and failed to report to duty. It is the council's further information that this was in connection with discussions or negotiations between the city and Chief Prime regarding his retirement and/or resignation. Then number seven, on or about April 9th, Chief Prime was placed on administrative leave by the mayor of Mobile, Sandy Stimson. Same day, Chief Prime began to give interviews, from which you're pulling from, Mr. Carroll. Same day, Chief Prime began to give interviews and/or statements to media outlets making a number of troubling allegations. We should all be able to agree with that. Number eight, council is mindful that its investigatory powers should be reserved for only the most serious matters. Nine, given the severity of the complaints made by Chief Prime, combined with the sensitivity and importance of his position, the fact that pursuant to Section 114C 38A of the Zogby Act, a city police chief may only be hired or removed involuntary by a recommendation of the city, a recommendation of the mayor and approval of five council members and the public and accusatory fashion in which the complaints were made, the council believes an investigation of these allegations is warranted so that the council has a full and unfettered understanding of the facts underlying Chief Prime's complaints. Ten, if the cause of and truth or falsity of these complaints are not fully investigated and addressed, the potential exists for malice and loss of efficiency at the Mobile Police Department as well as the city administration more broadly and an erosion of and a loss of public confidence in the city of Mobile. Number 11, it is not the intent of the council to duplicate, bypass, or supersede any internal investigations by the city or any outside parties, including the Attorney General. Rather, the council seeks to establish to its own satisfaction and on its own authority facts that can be the basis for further discussion, legislation, or any other steps in which may be necessary. You know, this goes to the issue that, you know, we've been reading reports. We've seen Chief Prime, you know, before the media. We've heard from some folks out in the general public, you know, a timeline needs to be set for this. You know, who are we interviewing? You know, should it be, should it be that we interview the chief himself at some point and hear specifically from him? You know, maybe that's necessary, but we should be able to set a timeline on how we want to proceed with that. But like I said before, today, I don't think we have the capacity or ability to fully understand it today and pass, you know, with certain a timeline, whether or not we're going to hire somebody, where we're going to conduct it ourselves, who we're going to interview, who's important to all this. I'm not an investigator. I don't even know what questions to ask, you know, other than what my constituents may share with me. So this is a way forward today to put everybody's mind at ease. City Council is going to uphold its end of the deal and investigate allegations that have been raised in the public eye.
Who's your third-party investigator? But was it named in your amendment? So you want, no, no, that's not what I'm asking. I don't remember hearing you state that there will be a third-party investigator within your amendment.
And that would be decided amongst the committee as a whole.
That's not what I'm asking. Was there a line calling for a third-party investigator?
In this.
Outside of the city, someone to do the investigation.
It does not exclude that possibility from happening, but it does not guarantee or require that it happen either.
If we're going to accept that amendment, then I think that it should include a third-party investigator.
Mr. Day.
I want y'all to just look around this table and think about what's happened over the last three weeks in our community and where we are today and who has caused all of that. And we're about to launch an investigation based on allegations by the person who has caused everything we've been through for the last three weeks. And why you think that an investigation is going to quiet him or quiet any of his supporters? I cannot imagine.
That's not the intent, though, you see. The intent is not to quiet anybody or quiet their supporters.
Quiet the controversy. Quiet the controversy.
Certainly, I'd love for the controversy to be quiet, but that's not the intent of this amendment, you know.
No, I'm not arguing against your amendment. I'm arguing against the investigation.
Let me ask two people questions. Mr. Josh Woods and Corey Penn. The, what we had just stated, Carol, about, you know, adding the third-party investigation, would you be okay with this amendment?
That was going to be my question to you, Mr. Reynolds. I mean, is that a friendly amendment to your amendment that you're willing to accept?
You know, this is a committee as a whole and we're discussing the factors of it. I've heard from Councilman Dave's. Not only is he maybe, I don't want to misstate him. His.
Go ahead. Everybody else.
He. He and others have laid out potentially good reasons for not bringing in a third party. And I've also heard from people that, you know, the third party, why do they have to be a lawyer? You know, we're a bunch of non-lawyers and we get it. You know, why would we want to enter a lawyer into the, you know, is that necessary? Is that something we want to do? So. You know, and if the committee.
Hire somebody. We have to have a contract.
If the committee decided to say, bring in Chief Prime and ask questions of Chief Prime and he give his answers, you know, would that not satisfy the committee then and there? You know, I don't know. I can't foresee the future. But I think tying our hands and hamstringing this, that we must. I think that should be up for discussion and debate at some point when we further understand what precisely our constituents are after with this investigation. Then we can determine whether or not we want to, as a committee, to engage with a third-party attorney, whoever it is, to see if we need to pursue any further. Not to mention Attorney General, you know, who has a whole slew of attorneys. They're already looking at at least a portion of this matter.
So my question, going back to you, Mr. Woods, are you ready to say publicly? Will you be okay with that statement added or not?
I'd be okay with that statement added.
What would the statement say?
I would say something, not a must. I would be okay with saying that.
May.
May what?
May engage a third-party to investigate further.
I kind of disagree with that.
Hold on, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I think, again, we're making it a little too hard. We, the whole, now we're at everything. Mr. Carroll stated that he's okay with the amendment at third-party investigation. That's a yes or no. And your question is, we need to talk more about it so everybody have opportunity. That opportunity is to vote. They have, everybody has a vote and they can vote on the amendment. So I'm for the third-party investigation. Mr. Carroll stated to support the amendment. He will support the amendment version that you brought with the third-party investigation. The question is, would you support adding that? And then after that, we vote. And if whoever say they don't want it, that's their opportunity to say, to speak their voice. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll just draw everybody's attention to item number five in the amendment where it says, Section 1144C-38C of the Zogby Act authorizes the council to obtain legal counsel outside the city merit system to advise and defend them in their respective capacity as council members and in the pursuit of the operation of government. So the authority is outlined in here. And if our committee, after we get down the road here where we can truly understand what is it that we need to be investigating, we can then decide, because the authority is outlined here to us, whether or not we want to hire somebody and what kind of specialists we need to hire. But what I don't want to have happen is say, we hamstring ourselves and say, hey, look, we must hire a third-party. Anything we say as a committee as a whole, you know, does not supersede that third-party. And I don't know, I think the option's still open down the road. So to answer your question, if it were offered at this time, I don't think it would be pertinent at this juncture to require that we hire some third-party, not knowing who they are, what their expertise would be. And if that amendment were offered, I'm not in favor of it. Now, you may have other votes to support.
Hold up, Mr. Woods, then Mr. Penn, then Mr. Carroll.
Okay, so, so, Mr. President, first and foremost, to tell you, like, the amendment that's before you, the administration, there's no objection to it.
Right.
No. I think we're conflating two things, but I just want to give some clarity here. One is you all unequivocally have the ability to investigate. You passed this resolution. You also have to think about, in conjunction with 1144C 38, there is a resolution on the books now where the council president, in conjunction with the city council attorney, you can hire somebody. If you pass this resolution, you can do that if you want to. I don't know. Frankly, I don't care whether you add it or not. That's up to the council. We're just trying to get a path forward. Third-party resolution, it makes sense. Third-party investigation, it makes sense if you're talking about giving clarity to the general public who really has not seen all of the facts, right? That doesn't seem to fit. In fact, I think probably you haven't seen it. That's why I was trying to get everybody to look at the information that we gave in, before the committee meeting. That time has passed. I do want to answer some questions for you. I think Councilwoman Gregory made some salient points about some things being administrative issues. That doesn't mean you all can investigate them. That just means you might not like the answer that you get. It won't be improper or illegal. But the investigations that have been done, some do address those issues. So you may be duplicating, which is something I know you all want to avoid. So I may answer three questions. Proper administration of MPD, that's a question about the chain of command. It is a question about whether or not you have to listen to the chief of staff or the public safety director. Lack of control over Gulf Coast Technology Center, that's an absolute. The chief, the chief of police did not have absolute control over Gulf Coast Technology. And I can answer that question for you already. That's just not how it worked. I don't think that's a secret. You've gotten rid of Shot Spotter. The grievances, you're more than happy to look at them, but you have to understand that non-merit system employees don't have an official grievance process. That is for merit system employees and that goes through the personnel board, not the same animal. I think somebody going into it must understand that. And then I think Mr. Dave's made the salient point of the collusion. As long, if you're an at-will employee, and I don't want to disparage anyone. If you're an at-will employee, and Mr. Dave has fired a lot of people, you. You can be fired. You can be fired, let go, or asked to resign for any reason, good or bad, or no reason at all, as long as it's not an illegal reason. I think somebody was asking about why it should be a lawyer. I'm not saying it should or shouldn't, but it has to be somebody that understands that you can be asked to leave for any reason, good, bad, or no reason at all. As long as it's not a legal reason. And so that's, just kind of want to tighten the scope for you all. And that's one of the things that we looked at. But if you look through the reports, you'll see that some of the questions have been answered, some of them, maybe not to your satisfaction. But we don't have an objection to this amendment or going into an investigation or looking at these things. You just might not like the answer that you get from the standpoint, not that it's illegal or legal. You just might not like it because it's not within the confines of the council's control. But we don't have objection to that either. You ask questions all the time that deal with the administration. I don't have a problem with that. I wish the council meeting didn't last so long, but that's just a wish. Doesn't mean you don't have to investigate that either.
Mr. President, at this point, I mean, I'm a, somebody, I'm offering amendment, somebody else can offer amendment and we vote. I mean, it just don't make sense to just keep going through this, going back and forth. And I don't want to take the words out of Joe's mouth. Joe don't, it don't matter what we bring, he gonna vote it down. So let's just move forward. Like, I don't know why we keep having these discussions. Let's put the amendment forward. If Councilman Reynolds don't support it, then he has the right to vote it down. And then everybody else vote. Let's move forward.
Like I said, I can count to five and it seems like we're at an impasse. I'm not a lawyer. I'm an engineer. I'm a contractor. I'm a project manager, program manager. I build things for a living, go through design development things. I help program buildings. So when it comes to the confines of the law and building and being an engineer and building and construction and digging in the dirt, I know that like the back of my hand. So when it comes to those things, I'm great at it. But when it comes to legal questions and confines of the law and due responses of the law and asking questions that may have legal bearing and how this happens within the law, I'm not good at that. So I can't sit here and ask the administration something when they've got a slew of lawyers and I, you know, I barely have a, I have a hard time now defending myself against Ricardo. I have to battle and study the night before just to weed him off, you know, fiend him off. So you're asking the council to do something where legal prowess and the mindset, we're not lawyers. How many lawyers on the council? How many of you understand every ounce of the Zogby Act? How many of you understand those questions that need to be asked and how they're going to be responded to within the confines of the law? None of us. None of us. So that's why an independent investigator is needed. Because, I mean, we're not perfect there. And by your amendment, you're saying that the council is perfect there and understands the law. I mean, we'd have to go ask a thousand questions just to get there. We're already handicapped. You know, it's seven of us, one lawyer, one opinion. And there's so many of everybody else to drive those opinions. How many times does this administration call three or four of you to the side to drive one opinion, to change the opinion of the others? How many times does that happen? Quite a bit. How many times are there walk-in meetings when those things are made to convince you of one thing or another? So your thinking will be biased towards an opinion on something. How many times have council members done that? That's why an independent person would be better. Because that independent person is better off because that person that hopefully won't be one that's tied to the administration of the council or anywhere else, that won't be biased and can't be biased by conversation about anything else. That's why a third-party is needed here. It's not that the council couldn't do it, but in a council doing it itself, you're open. open to every other influence out there. It's like being a jury, watching the TV in a murder trial and the people in the city are saying, he murdered him, he murdered him. And then you gotta go listen to the, to the, to the, to the lawyer come down there and put up a case. But in your mind, it's already guilty because somebody else has made it guilty for you. That's why third-party's needed. That's why I'm asking for a third-party.
All right, anyone else? All right. Uh, two o'clock is okay? Convene, council meeting? One thirty-six. Two fifteen.
Did you say you were willing to accept a third-party to your amendment?
Can't just put third-party on there and we can get this a little bit faster?
So I, I guess I need to read the specific language, so are you suggesting that-
Add the third-party independent investigator.
That we shall, is what you're saying. We shall hire a third-party to investigate. We don't even know what we're investigating, but we shall hire a third-party to investigate something.
Once we, that is there, we will pick that person and define the scope at that time. I thought we were trying to define the scope today based on the original, the original resolution, but we were incapable of doing that. So we shall, and then whatever else, we'll set the scope and then we'll pick the person.